All right, it's 12:06. We're going to get back to it. Next 30 minutes we have scheduled for the Old Town Transit Oriented Development Master Plan. This gives us market infrastructure analysis as well, and I think we have Linda Congleton as part of the team. Sorry if I got that wrong. I'm sure you can correct that for me. So it is all yours.
Actually, ma'am, I'm going to do a couple introductions if that's okay?
Thanks, absolutely, Michelle.
Got to get that high now.
Get your chips in my chest. There we go. Bye now.
All right, so we have a lineup for y'all today related to the Old Town TOD Master Plan update. So first, we will start with Linda with the five-year retail demand analysis and recommendations. Then we will have Paris come up again and talk to you all about the Old Town TOD Master Plan update. So you heard from Paris last year, and he gave y'all an update. Now, he's back to give y'all another update and to kind of tell you where we are at now in our long-term plans. Then next, you'll hear from Keith Marvin, the Director of Public Services, related to the Old Town Infrastructure Analysis. So we'll start with our short-term demand analysis. Paris will hit on our long-term, and then we're going to talk about all the infrastructure that we're going to need in order to support that. Then last, you'll hear from Richard, the Planning Director. He's going to get direction from you all today and talk about next steps. So before I hand it over to Linda, I just wanted to highlight what the target area was. So as opposed to Paris, Paris is looking at the entirety of Old Town. For Linda, we asked her to really just focus on the core of Old Town because that is more so the near-term demand. So we're looking at what's currently happening, what we expect to happen, and what we would like to happen in the next five years. And with that, I'll turn it over to Linda.
Hi, Linda Congleton. Can you hear me pretty well?
Yeah.
I am so honored to be your lunchtime entertainment. So hopefully, I can keep you awake, and we can have some time to answer questions. I'm going to be very succinct. The actual work we do is very detailed, and so if you have any questions, please ask us a little bit about my company. I have a small boutique consulting firm. I've been doing the retail mixed-use consulting for nearly 40 years. Hopefully, I don't show it. And we specialize in small downtowns, and we also do the glamorous, big shopping centers and international work. Our workers are national. Give you example of other cities we've worked with in Texas. We've worked in Frisco for private sector. We've worked for the city of Saxon, the city of Salina. So since 1984, we've been involved off and on in the Dallas area. Frankly, like it very much. So we were retained to do a short-term, five-year demand, so you can do some excellent planning on your projects coming up in the future. Next slide. We were also asked to look at viable strategies that your staff can conduct. Next slide. And we were given specific questions that your staff was curious about. Things that they want to know about the balance of heads and beds versus retail demand. Where's the optimal locations? Are asking rents too high? We'll address all these questions in the recommendations. And most importantly, what are the keys to success for near-term for a grocery store? And do you have a demand for that?
Yes, we do.
You do. Exactly, you do. Next slide. As part of our scope, we looked at comparable other downtowns within your market area. We attended staff meetings and brainstorming sessions. We updated your Old Town inventory. Now, I will tell you, some of the data that we had was in November. Yesterday, I was walking around downtown. There are a few more vacancies than it was in November, but it's basically pretty much the same. We also retained to do grocery store demand analysis. Next. We looked at not only your close-in residents, your city residents, your daytime workers, your hotel visitors, the whole gamut of potential demand. Also, your office. When I say daytime workers, I mean your office and your other workers within your city limits. We used your city GIS system. Now, unlike some consultants who just look at the census, that's not really good enough for a city like yours that has been in a very high-growth mode. And when you're looking at close-in demand, particularly for a grocery store, you really have to look at the planned and proposed that are in the pipeline today. You have to look at units that have actually been constructed on the ground. This is the same thing that grocery stores actually do themselves. We call it counting rooftops. What is really there? And I will tell you, no matter how good the census is, for high-growth cities, they're behind the times. So we really look at your city GIS system to really assess how many households you really have. Next slide. One thing I want to start out with is, what are your strengths? What have you done well? And you've done a lot of things exceptionally well, and I want to take my hat off to you. You've got an attractive center park. You've got the Performing Arts Center. You've done the wonderful benches, the colorful banners, the nice streetscapes, the signage, the brick pavers, the public art. You've selectively bought parcels and put the restaurants on it, which was such a key thing. I'm now working with a city that has fairly high incomes, over $100,000, but it has absolutely nothing to work with. I wish it had bare land. It is horrible, god-awful, ugly strip retail. And that's almost harder because you're having to replace businesses that are already there. You've got warehouse uses. You've got so much compared to some of the cities I've seen. You've also done a great job of encouraging new housing close in to your town, and I'm going to get to that. Because no matter what you do, no matter what you do, you can't stop suburban competition. You know, you've been talking about what to do about the Music City Mall, and we took a look at that. I mean, that needs some work. It's going to happen. So you're going to have that kind of suburban competition that is going to continue. Nothing you can do about that, and nothing you can do about other cities that compete against you. But what is your niche? And I'm going to pose to you that your real niche is creating what I call an urban village to serve your own residents first and foremost, then sort of like extra, extra, that extra 15%, 20%. Because if your locals are shopping there, and your close-in residents are shopping, guess what? Word of mouth arises. They tell all their friends that live outside, they'll come in and shop as well. But your first and foremost thing is to concentrate on your own close-in market. Next slide. First thing I'm going to do is kind of give you a big picture of downtown. Right now, you have, and I'm just talking round numbers, you have about 115,000 square feet. Now, I want you to think in your head, that's about the size of a neighborhood grocery store center, except, guess what? You don't have the grocery store, you know, and you're badly needed. Now, when you have two projects that are under construction build, and that's the deck on main, and when you have the main-and-mill lofts, you will also add on additional retail. When you add on all those two retail projects, and we contact the owners and what they're building, you will have about, let's just round it off and say about 130,000 square feet. And I want to compliment you and say, that's not a bad square footage, but you also have about four or five vacancies in town that need to be filled. And always, it's a retail premise, you've got to fill what you have first. You've got to fill those vacancies, and then you add new construction. What I'm going to say to you is, your new retail demand over the next five years is only about 8,000 square feet. But guess what? If you fill the spaces you have that are empty in town, that will fill it. So what is my bottom line for you is, in the next five years, you really don't need to construct more new retail space. You've got deck on main coming up, you've got main-on-mill. They've got some great locations in the heart of your town. You don't need to construct more, at least in the five years. Okay, next slide. So back to this urban village, my summary conclusions. What is it that you're... I always believe in building upon your strengths. It doesn't do any good to build upon your weaknesses, does it? Okay? What are you different from all the other cities that are around you? You've got that great charm, small-town feeling, that strong sense of community. You're very walkable. You can walk from your square, the public park, to all the uses in less than a couple of minutes. You really are quite walkable. You're close-in heads and beds. In five years, within a half a mile, you're going to have 2,200 homes, households, not people, households. And that includes all the planned and proposed projects. That is a good number. That's only within a half-mile. Those people can walk, they can ride a bike, they want to take their car, it's really short. That's your core market for that small grocery store that we see. Always, you have to remember that retail follows residential. It has never been any other way. In other words, you've got to have the households first, then the retail comes. Every retailer will tell you, every big box will tell you, every grocery store guy will tell you, I need to know how many homes you have before I come there. And I'm going to keep coming back to that main point. Your biggest near-term potential is adding that grocery store. Next slide, please. So what is one of my biggest points? Over the next five years, I think it would be grand if you could focus on new housing growth. You already have quite a new, some apartments already under construction. You've got other projects, like I said, you've got a number of projects that are already in the pipeline. But if you're even looking out beyond five years, focus on what you can do to bring in new homes within about a five-minute drive time. Remember this urban village? If they're five minutes from your downtown, your project is going to be their first choice. They're not going to be lured away by other retail. And also, these are your repeat buyers. These are people who will come, not just once a week, maybe they'll come twice, three times a week, and those are your loyal customers. Next slide. We already talked about this, but I wanted to emphasize that upon full occupancy of main-and-mill, you'll have 1,400 households. Not bad, not bad, within a half-mile. Oops, what happened to this slide? Sorry.
No, touch it.
Okay. Now, that grocery store demand, in the early years, we see a small boutique grocery store between about 3,000 and 5,000 square feet. You say, gosh, that's kind of small. Yes, but after five years, if it does very well, it does have the ability to expand up to maybe 12,000 or 13,000 square feet. We can talk to you about many examples of entrepreneurs who really understand their market, where they have a little bit of the produce, a little bit of the gourmet goods. They have the salads, the salads and the charcuterie, and the takeaway foods, the preparing meals. You're going to get some upscale folks, particularly living in some of those apartments that are right around your downtown. My prediction on your main-and-mill project, the one that is right across from, you know, Per Coffee House or Kitty Corner, actually, that you're going to also get move-down buyers. Those are those very affluent, you know, over-58 group that said, hey, I'm going to leave that big house behind. I don't need it. The kids are going to college. I think I'll move in and have a lock-and-key kind of life. They've got square footages that are almost, you know, that are fairly significant, and the rents are up to $3,000 a month. That implies that you're going to have some fairly upscale folks. And think about it, if you're in your 50s, you're still working, you got ready your house, now you can leave it, and you don't have to worry about the yard, the dog, everything else, and you can go and travel, I think you're going to get a blend, and we've seen this over and over again with small towns, of those plus the younger generation. The families? No, not in the, they'll be in the larger homes. So the staff asked me for a rule of thumb. From now on, it's about 575 square feet per every 100 homes. Now, that's not something you can look up in a book. That's something we've developed over the years and years and years, and where we take your particular demand. Now, keep in mind, your new residents, even though your whole city has a median income of about, let's say, $80,000, your new residents are going to be more likely in the $100,000 range. So close-in, when you have these new households, the blended average of those people living close-in is going to be higher income. That's why I think there's a real great opportunity for that grocery store to be maybe have a nice wine selection, a nice, you know, a little bit of the upscale goods, the prepared foods. Okay, next slide. So one of the things we noticed about your city versus, let's say, McKinney. McKinney has far greater percentage of ownership housing than your city does, even before you started growing, you know, new developments. And if we looked at a whole array of cities that have vibrant downtowns, the ones that are most vibrant have a little bit higher percentage of ownership. Now, why do I like ownership housing? And by the way, I'm dealing with a city right now that has all ownership and no rental, so it's not always the same. I'd like to see your city encourage more ownership close-in, within walking distance of your walkable town. And let me tell you why. Renters, and I'm not talking about the older renters, I'm talking about the younger ones, the younger ones tend to spend for food and beverage, entertainment. They have less discretionary income, in spite of what everybody tells you, all the millennials, you know, they're the high-growth market. No, it's actually the older market, the 50-plus, or it's the family market that has kids that has real needs. They have real things they need in their house. The other reason I like the ownership housing market is they provide the stability. They are committed to your city long-term. They're the ones who can walk, you know, and say, hey, I'm here for the long term. Long-term, I believe in your city. I want things to happen. They're more your repeat buyers. I'm not against rentals, believe me, no. I'm just saying, from what you've done in the past, think in terms of maybe adding and incorporating more high-density townhome kinds of developments. Those can be developed at 20 to 25 to the acre. They can provide that niche for the first-time homebuyer, or the one that has just a small child, before they can afford a single-family detached home. Next slide. I would like to see your city update your master plan to add more ownership housing so it at least peaks towards that 50%. So if you stand back from your whole master plan, after 20 years, you're going to see about half of it with ownership. Now, you may not be able to achieve it, giving land ownership, the kinds of density that many developers, private developers want to see, but this would be the ideal. Right now, you're slanted, even before the new development, are mostly rentals and not enough ownership. And why I'm also promoting this is, I think your town is a huge selling point for people who own homes. Think about it, if you get that grocery store, that will be a big plus for your downtown because people who own homes want to see that they can easily go to the grocery store. It's walkable, they're committed to the town, they see the charm, and I think that is something you might want to consider in the future. Next slide. Now, I was asked by the staff, do higher incomes impact spending? It seems like an obvious question, but not necessarily. Yes, of course, higher incomes impact spending. And, you know, the higher the median income of a particular city, like if it's over $100,000, blah, 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 you know, they tend to spend better. However, as I said, the character of spending for younger people versus older people versus families is very different. You can have the same $100,000 a year household, and if they have three kids, they spend, I guarantee you, vastly different than a household with two singles that are not related, and they're out there partying still in their lifestyle. So yes, they do impact it. And I'm going to say that one of the greatest notices you have, because of the new housing you already have planned for, as those incomes will rise, you will see more spending downtown. Right now, I feel that many of your retailers are sitting here kind of waiting like, oh, when main-and-mill opens, or when mill, you know, that when the project over here opens, I know I'll get better sales. I think you will. I know you will. But the more you promote more of that housing that is close-in, the higher the sales. Okay, next. I was asked, should we focus on one street versus another? Short-term, no, not important. One of the kind of misimpressions people have about retail, that they think, oh, in a small downtown, it needs to be all in a row, needs to be all on one street. No, it doesn't. Think about the most of the historic, organic towns you've ever met. Something is over here, something is over here, something is over here. It's not necessarily in a straight line, as long as it's all easily walkable. Most cities that grow organically, not, you know, built from scratch, have that kind of sense of, well, there's a historic building over here. Like if you go to Ben's Distillery, that's a really nice destination, but it's different than, let's say, going over to Per Coffee House. Or any city... I was asked about city subsidies. Are they needed for the grocery store? No. Now, the grocery store does need favorable rent. Grocery stores don't pay the same kind of rent as small retail shops. They just can't afford it because their margins are thin. But it doesn't need... You have enough homes in five years to support a grocery store easily. You have enough homes when main-and-mill opens for a 3,000-square-foot store without any city subsidies. Now, I'm not talking about things like maybe provide tenant improvements, or, you know, maybe some benefits on the sewer fees and things like that. I'm talking about, if somebody comes to you and says, oh, I'm pioneering here, you know, in this town, I don't know about my operations. Uh-uh, guy. You can make it. There are enough homes. And if he doesn't have that kind of confidence, he shouldn't be opening up in your town. I was asked about the asking rents in downtown. Are they hurting your leasing strategies? Actually, some of the things that are hurting your leasing strategies are not the high rents. Your rents are actually quite modest. And they're modest in the Dallas area, they're modest overall, and if retailers can't afford those rents, that means that there's really something wrong, and that they can't make the sales to justify the rents yet. And again, that goes back to, if you have more homes, the sales increase, they can afford the rents. You don't have overly... But you do have some structural problems in terms of design. Some of these spaces that I see vacant, somebody didn't coach them very well. For example, I'll see a space that has no window. Retailers don't like little bitty windows. And same with restaurants, you know, they don't want to have a tiny little space where you can't see the diners. Or maybe I'll see a space that doesn't have any outdoor dining. So you shouldn't be leasing to a restaurant if your window pane wasn't built, you know, broad enough to really show the diners in there, or if you don't have outdoor dining space. So some of your property owners probably need a little guidance on how to really construct space that is desirable for retailers. Next slide. Yeah? Okay, I will. All right. I was asked about a hotel. Now, keep it moving when people...
You probably don't need to spend a whole lot of time on this one.
Okay.
I think we get that there's no 100, 150-room hotel.
Yeah, okay, got it. And if you're going to do a small hotel, fine, you know, like eight rooms, 10 rooms. Okay, next slide. Direct marketing to visitors. And you have an unusual situation in that yours, I would say about 75% of your restaurants are rated 4 and above on Yelp. That's exceptional, exceptional. So I would say that you, out-of-town visitors, I know most of your hotels, getting back to the hotels, are located around where the, you know, your highways, your major highways are around the old mall. Visitors will easily drive 10 minutes for a good restaurant. Maybe not so much for shopping, but for restaurants, they will. I think there is a way to promote to them. And not in a magazine, a one-page flyer that's in something that they can easily see. Visitors do use Yelp ratings, and I think there's a way to distinguish your downtown to visitors. Next slide. The grocery store, we already talked about this. We can maybe go over this a little bit later. Noon-life entertainment consults. I was asked to think of anything that might be worth looking at. I'm a huge believer on live events that highlight your existing businesses. Well, one thing that Claire mentioned that I thought was dynamite is where you have either musicians or artists inside the retail shops and have a strolling event where people go from shop to shop, or restaurant to restaurant on a Friday evening. That highlights the businesses. Now, don't get me wrong, some of your big events, like, you know, St. Patty's Day or anything, they're fun and frolicky and all that kind of good stuff. But I will tell you, in general, retailers are not really excited about things like jazz events or music events. Because what do people do? They come with their picnic baskets. They sit in the park, they listen to the jazz event, and they go home. They don't shop and they don't eat. Next slide. I do think there is a potential for a craft brew pub, not large. The kinds of restaurants I would recommend in the future, and this is a national trend. It's not just you, it's not just Dallas, it's everywhere. The 3,500 to 4,000-square-foot restaurant with a generous outdoor dining area. I like to see up to 1,200 to 1,500 square feet of outdoor space. I really... If you're going to do this kind of operation, it should be family-friendly. Now, I understand the Ben's Distillery is thinking about expanding their dining area. It's rather small right now. I think that would be dynamite. It's an existing facility, they could expand it. On top of that, if you had a small craft brew pub, but I cannot emphasize to you enough, then it needs to be an operation where, you know, the kids can come in, they can have a meal as well, they don't feel like it's just a singles hangout. Next one. Office space. You have coworking space already downtown. Now, coworking, you pay a fee, you go in there, you work part of the time. I'm suggesting there might be a small demand. I'm not talking about a large-score footage, because a lot of this has been coming out of the woodwork since COVID. People are looking at their little bitty room that they're working out of out of their house, that 100-square-feet, and saying, this doesn't really cut it. I think there might be some demand for upper-level space for entrepreneurs that want their own small office that is all theirs, 300 square feet, sign on the door, a common kitchen, a common meeting room, but it's not coworking. It's not short-term, it's yours. It's yours. You already have quite a bit of medical space, you have other office spaces, but I think you could possibly attract even small entrepreneurs, or maybe even outside your city limits, within a, think about it, a 15-minute drive time, and you're part of a charming little downtown, and it wouldn't conflict with your existing office space nearby. We already talked about this, is planning events that directly benefit your retailers. And here's the key to this, the more successful your businesses are, the more word of mouth will become your success criteria. It attracts new businesses. Next one. Focus on good food and unique experiences. This is not a small thing. You know, when we talked about that Yelp, you know, rating and the word-of-mouth advertising, that is a huge plus. Plus, I think maybe even some cross-marketing with some of the Louisville Grand Theater events would be excellent. Next slide. I'm just suggesting to you that on your parking, particularly like your grocery store, it's got to be convenient, it's got to be surface parking, it can't be... At most, if you're going to plan for parking for your urban village, I would go deck, but not... I mean, I'm leaving aside the main-and-mills, the republic-private kind of projects, that's a different deal. But for retailers or commercial businesses, at most, a deck is inexpensive during the hot air, hot times, that can be, you know, a big advantage. But I would be really careful about your restaurants, not pushing restaurants to locate downtown if the parking isn't immediately accessible and generous. Next. Final comments. It's not... I know you've been working on this city for about 20 years, and I just don't want you to feel lonely. You're not alone. Many, many cities have the same issue of working, you know, and working quite long. But I'm telling you right now, your new homes will have the biggest impact on your retail spending and attracting new businesses. And I would like you to think in terms of quality instead of quantity. I have a client that is one of the most successful resort villages in the entire nation, does $800 to $1,000 a square foot, and it's only 65,000 square feet. But every operation in there is just dynamite. You don't have to have lots of square footage to be really wonderfully successful, but what you do have has to be really super, really good, and really successful, and cater to your local residents. You need high sales per square foot. Your individual businesses need to say, wow, I'm doing $400, $500 a square foot, not 200, not 250, that's marginal. You need to build upon your core strengths. That is the good Yelp. Your individual businesses need to say, wow, I'm doing $400, $500 a square foot, not 200, not 250, that's marginal. You know, you need to build upon your core strengths, that is the good Yelp rating food, the enter, you have some really wonderful committed entrepreneurs. I've, I've fallen victim to that, you know, here's your Odin bag, you know, just a little humor. Um, you've got a distinguished, uh, distillery, you've got small-town charm, you've got a sense of humility, build on those strengths. Don't focus on your weaknesses, focus on your strengths. Now I'll open it up to any questions and.
I have a quick question. I get the feeling that you feel like we should have a grocery store in the downtown area? I'm picking that vibe up. I, I'm curious, the, um, you know, I think about the, the small footprint stores, uh, I think about like AGB used to have a pantry format a while ago, you know, we, we got Sprouts, that's, that's, that's in Carrollton, but it's outside of, outside of Castle Hills. Harris Teeter, if you go up north, they're kind of, they're kind of a space.
Right.
What, what product would be available in this area that, that you can envision? What, what chain would?
I do not envision a chain at all.
Okay.
I envision an independent.
Thank you, Rosemead.
What's that?
Thank you, Rosemead Market.
I haven't been to Rosemead Market.
Oh, my gosh.
Next one.
Let me, let me, let me, yeah, I think maybe she understands. Your best, your best solution for this is finding somebody who has the background in the grocery store business, wants to be his own entrepreneur. And if ever I saw an area in the States that have that kind of entrepreneurialism, it's here in Dallas. He, he knows how to manage a grocery business. And I don't mean just somebody who, I mean, he really knows how to provide a little bit of the produce, and, but he also has to have experience in salads and charcuteries and, and prepared foods to go. No, it needs to be the independent operator with a solid track record in the grocery and possibly even restaurant business. But no, don't go there, and I'll tell you why. Because all your big format stores are so humongous, it takes away from your small-town charm. Um, I, I, and I can tell you a story about how we had to work like hell to get Publix to downsize to 30,000 square feet in a master plan community in Florida. Try to get those grocery stores here in Dallas to go from 52 to something small. Uh-uh, not gonna happen. It's just not. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Congleton, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hello again.
Hey, Paris.
So, when we got together last time, we talked about the master plan, there's been some updates that we prepared since then, I just wanted to run through that a little bit. Um, and then we've also have engaged and with you all, HKS engineers on this as well, to go through a pretty extensive infrastructure analysis, I think they're gonna go through that afterwards. Um, but we are a big believer in having a strategy as to if you're gonna open an area up for development, know what the costs that are implied in that, in that development to be, especially from on a timeframe. Uh, cause someone could come in and say, you know, there's some cheap land over here, there's a reason it's cheap, it's because it's not served by infrastructure, and they buy it, then they come in, put political pressure on, and then it's a, you know, it's a $15 million price tag or something to, to activate it. So it's, it's understanding where to act and when. Next slide. Um, so just real quickly, cause it's, it's really worth repeating, um, you know, there are a lot of train stations, um, that are here or planned, there's new ones even that are being planned as we speak, that DCTA is doing. So you have something that is regionally unique. It's, you know, less than 1% of the MSA from a land area, and that's taking all of Old Town, assuming a 10-minute walk. So this is something that's unique, where transit's headed in the future, you know, we all have crystal balls on that, but it is a fixed asset that's in place, so one wouldn't think it's gonna go away. Next, next slide. And you may remember that there's really two sides, and I think Marchelle covered it in her description of Linda's scope, there's kind of two aspects to Old Town. Um, there's the western side, which obviously City Hall and the Plaza anchor with the other good things that are going on in the historic core. And then there's the eastern side, on the other side of the rail, um, which is large lots, you know, a lot of it, there are areas in the floodplain, a lot of it is underserved from an infrastructure standpoint. Well, what becomes kind of interesting is the decisions that were made in the development of those zones over time, is you have smaller scale, smaller footprint, mixed use, some housing in the historic core, and then you have big footprint industrial and light industrial buildings as you go down the hill. And that's actually positive, um, from an assembly standpoint, as you could imagine, if you're trying to assemble in the small grain lot area, you might have 10 owners to contend with, where you have one owner for multiple phases, potentially depending on the use as you go down the hill. Next slide. So in working with staff, there is essentially two concepts. There's a streetscape district, which is all about walkability in the western area, um, and then there's what we're calling an innovation district on the east side, and that's bringing a similar blend of uses together, um, but also emphasizing employment as well. Next slide. There's, you may remember this general framework, which was, uh, you know, everything that's in gray are existing streets, what's in white are new streets. Those are basically respecting property lines, that's a mistake that a lot of people make sometimes, it gets very challenging when you don't respect property lines, as you could imagine. So this respects property lines by and large. Um, and then we look at a whole range of uses, um, all types of residential in different versions of yellow, um, mixed use in kind of the red area, um, we've got employment in the purple areas, obviously public and civic, and then different types of, of open space, which is another important component. Next slide. So we went through a real estate analysis that looked at land values, looked at, uh, complexity of ownership, um, and, and other factors, and arrived at what we call an ease of development analysis that showed land, um, that in traditional market terms was more easily able to buy that land and develop on that land. And it, it's not surprising that there's not a lot of that that exists in the core of Old Town, because you have operating businesses, so it's expensive, just to start out with. Doesn't mean it couldn't happen, um, but it means that there's, it's, it's gonna come with a pretty hefty price tag, and probably an incentive request, um, oftentimes. But interestingly, over on the northeast and south portions, um, there are immediate opportunities outside of infrastructure. We'll talk about that in a minute. So that's a good thing. Oftentimes, you're already priced out of the market, you're not here. There's, and I think what's happened on the, kind of the fringe of, of Old Town is, is reflective of that, you know, and, and, you know, these developments that are, that have occurred and are, and are occurring are reflective of the fact that they're outside of the core footprint because of a cost standpoint, it's easier for them to go. Next slide. So we, we kept that in mind, and you remember, uh, the kind of core of what we looked at previously was in here, there's been a lot of good projects that have come out of that, it's fantastic to see those things on, you know, on the ground and moving. And this expands over into here. And, you know, I'll emphasize a point that Linda made earlier, which is, you know, housing is important, all types of housing, rental, for sale, at different scales, attached, detached. Um, and the market can kind of understand that, but especially around transit, you wanna have a lot of walkability, you wanna have a lot of variety, uh, in the type of housing and size of the units, for sale, for lease. Um, and this is actually a good place to be considering housing, um, for the reasons that she mentioned. The other thing I'll say in, in our work all over the place is that in an area that's 200 acres or so, 150 to 300 acres, kind of in that range, unless you have about 6,000 to 8,000 people living there, you don't even notice people walking around. That gives you a scale. So it's the, when you hear thousands of units, it gets scary until you put it in, in, you know, the, that real context. When I worked on Uptown Dallas, I mean, there's, you know, 50,000 people that are living there, you see a lot of people walking around. Um, but when it started, it was a ghost town, and there were 5,000 units, it was a ghost town, you couldn't tell, people were driving home, they weren't walking around. Housing drives demand for restaurants, that then drives demand for a certain kind of employment, and then it starts over again, and it usually densifies after that. And, you know, hotels do come in at a certain point, but they don't come in upfront. Um, so you see, this is a one depiction of 100 different ways to draw on those blocks, but it does show the street frameworks. And, you know, we made, working with HKS engineers and your, and your staff, we made assumptions about, uh, you know, what the program would be in here, and then they calculated capacity, um, and I think the end result is a, a strategy that shows what the costs are with each block, so that you can make an informed decision when someone comes in and says, hey, we want a new townhomes right here. Great. Um, you know, what is the inherent cost that would allow those townhomes to go forward? And if they come forward to you and say, well, that's terrific, but we need to have Sanitary and Storm down in here, you may see that, well, you know, actually, that means we're gonna have to pull from all the way over here, and there's a huge cost associated with it. You may make that decision, um, but at least you have an informed tool that you can use. So what you're seeing in here are, is ownership, you're seeing more dense, uh, residential and mixed use, you're seeing, uh, you know, DCTA's looking at their headquarters by the station, and they, this was a plan that they've developed, we're actually working with them right now, um, so this may get updated, um, but it's all good. Um, you see more townhomes, you see some open spaces, you see mixed-use buildings. And what's interesting down in the southern area is there's an opportunity for a whole range of housing, um, from seniors to townhomes, apartments, you know, for sale, for lease. But I just wanna stress, this is a long-term deal, this is a 25-year plan, this none, this isn't gonna happen in the next three years, it's not. You know, it takes one project, three to five years to implement, just one. Someone came in today and said they want to do that, it's gonna, you remember how long it took for these to go, from conception to completion, it just takes a while to get to the point where those get done. So this is a, probably a 20, 25-year plan realistically, um, but I think all of this shown can happen. Next slide. So from an infrastructure standpoint, you'll, uh, there's kind of the, uh, you remember the market opportunity zones in black, and then what we called incentive-related, which is probably because of land value, there's, uh, you know, there's probably a request where they may come in and need some assistance, like you've already seen in some things that are happening. But I can tell you for sure that, you know, Main and Mill, for instance, didn't have infrastructure mains built into their performa, that's, that's the city's expense, and you've seen that. So, you know, when you look at that though, and breaking it into those zones, you know, there's a fair amount of cost related to infrastructure, and it's, it's equivalent, it's, you know, 500, you know, million dollars in, of potential value, um, and you're looking at about a million dollars of, uh, or, no, that's a present value, this is, sorry, we're not on cost yet, this is on value potential. But when you look at all of this in here, that's reflective of about a billion dollars of, of taxable value over that 20, 25-year time in today's dollars. I mean, that's, that's robust. Next slide. So from an, from an analysis standpoint, Linda put a, an analysis together from a market standpoint that was kind of a five-minute, uh, trade area, if you will. You had a catalyst commercial put together, uh, one based on a 10-minute. Um, so we looked at that in the context of the plan, and in the two zones, the market opportunity incentive, you know, it's, it's about $500 million of opportunity, um, if you take what they had laid out and you, you ascribe values to that, you know, it's, it's, you know, three times that, um, in areas, so, you know, the, when you add these together, you know, we're pretty close, is, is the basic point. Um, so that's, that's positive, and, you know, obviously the market's gonna step in and, and verify all of these, you know, all the crystal balls. Next slide, please. So, you know, this is reflective of 37 projects, um, and, you know, there is a sizable taxable value that comes out of that. Importantly, there's a critical mass of use and activity, housing is a big portion of that. You know, there's, when you fly in an airplane over any area, primarily what you're looking at is housing, anywhere. And then you, and then you have employment, you have retail. So once again, it's, what we need here is more critical mass. And I think if you use that number, if there are 6, 8,000 people living in downtown, you're just getting to a threshold where you notice that people live there, that it's a neighborhood. As many units as that sounds, it's, it's the reality. And I, I saw Linda's point about, uh, you know, the, uh, you know, the number of units per square foot of retail, you know, you know, we, we believe in something similar to that. And when you add it up, you see it still doesn't create a ton of retail, even with the number of units that we're talking about. So what does create that, when, whether it's, we worked at Legacy or a bunch of places around, it's the form, it's the experience, and it's a couple key restaurants. And then once that happens, and there's more opportunities, that the market can see how they can come and fit in, then it takes off. And then you get a bunch of stuff, sometimes you build too much of a certain thing, that's, at that point, you're out of it, it's, it's a market thing there. But it is not led by retail. She's made a real good point there. And I think that's it.
All right, and now we'll have Keith go over the infrastructure analysis.
I know it's got my name on it, but obviously David Solomon, our city engineer, has been heavily involved in this as well, and I'll talk a little bit about the utility piece, and David will talk about the streets and drainage. We also have with us Michael Moore from, uh, HKS Engineering. What we're gonna talk about here, we're gonna boil down a 100-page report into four or five slides, and so, um, Michael's here, and, and his team has done the, the bulk of the analysis for us, and if we have any technical questions, he's, he's happy to answer those. So we'll talk a little bit about sanitary sewer infrastructure first, and, and, you know, what you have on that page, uh, the, the red lines are the new, uh, lines, uh, the black ones are, are existing, um, you know, and obviously, as we talk about redevelopment or infill development, uh, we, we need to build new infrastructure to support that. Um, an interesting thing, east of Railroad Street, um, there's really no capacity over there for gravity flow, um, back to our wastewater treatment plant. There's two lift stations out there today, the one, uh, at the bottom of the page is, is a public lift station, it's a fairly small one. There's one that's not actually shown on there over at, um, Valley Ridge behind the U-Haul store, it's a private lift station that serves the U-Haul, the QuickTrip, the Car Wash, uh, down, down around, uh, Main Street. To support the development on that side, we'll need an additional lift station, and our recommendation would be that we, um, try to centrally locate that and, and make it a public station, and, and hopefully, uh, take out of service at least one, if not both of those other lift stations that are down there to support that. Uh, we do also, um, have some capacity challenges in Line D, and, you know, let me go up, up there actually and point it out.
Uh, so, uh, Line D in, over here in red is a, is a capacity challenge, um, and then portions of Line A, as we, as we see that, um, more dense development, uh, we actually begin to see capacity challenges. So that's something the engineers developed here in, in their analysis, but I also wanna point out that every five years, we do an impact fee study, capital recovery fee study, which has a master planning component to it for both water and sewer, and we're actually fixing to, to start that process again, it's been about five years. And so this modeling, um, we will take, uh, and redo the, the land use assumptions and, and, um, population projections based on, on some of this density that was not included in our, in our 2017, 2018 update. So we'll do that again, we'll reanalyze this with, uh, the engineers that have been doing our modeling forever, and, and really hone in on these capacity challenges and make sure that we're scheduling work to upgrade those lines, certainly D and, and A as needed for, uh, you know, what that, what that reasonable development timeframe is, and what that peak, you know, master plan build-out, um, population projection is. You know, we heard a, a 20 to 25-year timeframe on this, so, you know, we have ample time to, to program those, uh, uh, capacity improvements. On the water side, really the same thing, in these new, um, new development areas, um, all new, all new, uh, water lines necessary to support that. And then as they modeled, uh, this density, um, especially with, with fire flow capacities, they found, uh, some existing line segments where there are, um, a need, the, the velocity is such in that line that it should be increased to, to, to reduce that, that velocity through some of those areas. Now, Walter Street, obviously, that's one where, uh, you'll see David talk a little bit about the, the, uh, the reconstruction of the streets here in a minute, uh, we would go ahead and increase the size of that water line as we do that street. Some of the other ones, um, you know, this line, uh, that's shown here, um, that's an unusual, I, I would call that an anomaly of the, of the modeling, that, uh, that that line would need to be increased from eight to 12, cause fully developed neighborhood, um, you know, I, I don't really envision that needing to be done. Uh, so we, we likely will not go in and, and, and tear up, um, you know, uh, new streets to, to, to increase those water line sizes. But, uh, again, th- this will all be modeled again as part of our overall modeling as well, and then those, those ones that are, um, you know, existing, uh, you know, would, would be handled as part of a regular reconstruction project, and then these other ones would be built with that development. So with that, I'm actually gonna turn it over to David here, and he's gonna talk about drainage and streets.
On the storm drainage side, actually, uh, we're, we're in relatively good shape as far as Old Town goes. Uh, back in the, uh, early 2000s, the city spent quite a bit of money on drainage upgrades in Old Town, and then also when the state, uh, rebuilt, uh, Main Street and, uh, Church Street, uh, back in the early 2000s, they upgraded a lot of the drainage then. Uh, you, you look at the map here, and, uh, the, the red lines are, are lines that indicate, uh, either new or upgraded drainage, and, uh, mo- most of these lines are in areas where we expect new development, so, uh, these lines that are shown on the map are really related to a new So these lines that are shown on the map are really related to a new development. The only line on this map that, actually, we've got it in our Blue Ribbon Bond project list, is a culvert up here that goes underneath the DCTA rail. And that culvert does need to be upgraded, it's too small. And it, it, actually, it drains most of Old Town, so it's, it's really a big pinch point. So when you look at this map, the only crucial infrastructure on the drainage side is this one culvert up here on the north end.
Is that one of the frequent washout spots?
Yes, it is. Yeah, as a matter of fact, there was a washout several years ago, and, and they had to go in and make some repairs. On the street side, you'll notice the, the streets in green. Well, first of all, the, of course, you know, we've got streets over here and then down south off, just north of Purnell. And again, all those are development-born. We've got some existing streets that are shown in green on this map and in yellow that do need to be upgraded. They don't meet our standards for the Old Town streets. And then some of them are in pretty poor condition. We've got our northeast Old Town up here, Walter Street, Leonard, Harris, Hatcher, I mean, not Hatcher, but Henrietta. And we've got all those streets packaged together in one of our Blue Ribbon projects that the Bond Committee is considering. Down here, we've got Elm Street. Elm Street is already funded. In fact, the design is completed. We've got, actually, it doesn't show up, but we've got a, a project up here on College Street that's already funded. We've got a project up here on College Street that's already funded, and that'll be a bid later this year. We've got a couple of streets down here on the southwest area of this map. And those, right now, are just short dead-end streets. They do need to be upgraded, but I think those, those will probably wait until we see some redevelopment down there in those, in that area. So.
All right. We'll talk briefly just about the costs. And so the, you know, these costs are, are based on today's dollars. There's not any escalation included in here. And categorized just by sanitary sewer, storm, water, and paving improvements, there is a 25% contingency in there. The interesting thing about this is there's a mixture of how this would be funded, right? So some of this would be constructed by the developer and, and would only be serving that particular development piece. Some of it, like the, the sanitary sewer lift station, we would try to very likely co-locate that somewhere, or centrally locate that somewhere so that that infrastructure isn't borne by any one particular development, but it, it would be constructed probably with one of the earlier phases and either funded by the city or some sort of pro rata where it could be, you know, portions of it could be paid off. But essentially, you're looking at 88 to 90 million dollars' worth of infrastructure, with some portion that's either developer-funded, or city-funded, or some combination of the two. And, you know, I don't know, Clarice, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so that, obviously, that's a, that's a big number. And, and like Keith said, this, this doesn't mean we're going to be pulling an 88-million-dollar check out of our back pocket. It really will be phased, it will be demand based on development along the way. And obviously, things can also change. Also, one note to, you know, really, the, the streets that we put on there were primarily streets that needed to have repairs to them, that were in bad shape. So we've got a mixture that are already in our Blue Ribbon program for, for prioritization by that committee. And, you know, we have several that, I think, in the future for complete streets, we've got some complete street projects that are not actually on there. So if you were to say, hey, bring all of our streetscaping up to, you know, the standard, you know, I think our new standard would be what, is it Leonard Street? What Leonard Street is over by Station at Old Town or Old Town Station? It would be almost all of our streets in, in Old Town, because none of them were really built to look like that, that walkable. So I think there's a lot more opportunity for additional projects, but, you know, how we can leverage COG dollars and things like that to be able to achieve those over the years. This really is here to just tell you, there is a need out there from a financial infrastructure standpoint. Obviously, going, Artur's dollars will be paying off the Grand Theater in 2027. And so you just need to be aware, especially going into your next conversation, which is about the Grand Theater, is, there isn't, you know, there are costs associated with all of these things, and you'll have to make decisions based on those things. So, that's it. I think Richard, Richard had one final next steps for y'all.
Okay, I know we've presented a lot of information. There's a lot of moving parts. But I think overall, staff would just like to see, kind of get direction from council to make sure we're all on the same page and that we are heading in the right direction as far as the ultimate vision. I think a lot of thought has been put into this plan. Paris and his staff has really done an excellent job, and really is based upon their experience on, you know, what are the ingredients that we need? What components do we need to have a really great downtown when it's all said and done? And so we just want to kind of take this opportunity to kind of pause and see if, if council has any comments, observations, concerns about, about this illustrative plan. And again, I want to emphasize illustrative. I think we, there's a lot of flexibility that could happen in here. Things could get shifted around. But I think overall, the mix and just the, how everything is composed, I think, is, is what is really the goal here. And we want to, want to make sure that, that the council is on the same page as the consultant team and, and staff. And if there's any other, you know, if there's any modifications that y'all feel should take place before we keep moving forward.
I have a question. So Linda's presentation talked about the, a goal mix of the residential being a 50/50 with rental and with ownership. So I was just curious how this illustrative aligns with that, or if it would need to be modified to meet that goal.
We, we've already done some modification, as, as Paris mentioned from what you saw last year. I think we did add more of the, the townhome-type housing in various areas, particularly in, in here, and in a couple of different areas. So there's still, you know, quite a bit of multifamily. And really, the model for Old Town over the last 20 years has been kind of let the, the market kind of dictate. That's why our Old Town Mixed Use District is fairly flexible, has a pretty good range of uses. And I think that's worked pretty well. We have been getting a pretty good mix. We could, you know, make some adjustment. It's probably something we're just going to have to watch as, as we move forward, and depends on kind of what comes in. But if that is a concern, you know, that is something that we could look for some ways to possibly increase that.
That's a major concern for me, too. We could have some very, some great ownership properties out here, you know, especially for people like me that are going to be looking in a couple of years to sell that huge house that I need to stay in this area.
So, and I, I also had a question related to that as well. You know, rather than waiting for them to come to us, is there a way that we could go find some builders that are, that could build some of the ownership products?
Actually, that's covered on the next slide in our next steps.
Is it? Well, awesome.
We were thinking the exact same thing, but I'll let Paris talk a little bit more about the mix.
So mix is interesting. So the most important slide on that, what I showed you earlier, was the framework plan, right? What this slide shows are literal building footprints, but the, the important thing is the street framework and what can be handled by that street framework. You may make the decision that there's no multifamily. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't propose that to you, and I can talk about why. You may make the decision that it's all townhomes or even single-family. You can do that, it's within your power, because obviously, there's, you know, zoning approval in some instances that would happen. But keep one thing in mind, if you think about a percentage mix like what Linda was talking about, there's usually a big disparity in density between for sale and for lease. So if you have one project that's at 65, 75, 100 units to the acre, and it's still nice, it's like what you have built, and it has a nice storefront and streetscape experience, et cetera. A townhome project might be 12, 15, 16, maybe even 18 units to the acre. Could be 20 even. But, but what happens is, when you start measuring the, the number of households that come out of that, they're in the same block, there's many more that are coming through the rental. So if your measurement is, I want to have half and half, it's going to decrease the land area pretty quickly. So when I look at it, I don't look at just what's colored, I look at the existing neighborhood that also exists, and I look all the way over to 35 in how I measure downtown, Old Town. Not just this. This is kind of the TIF district. I look at that whole zone and then look at what that full mix is. And when we looked at it, you're missing, there's, there's single-family, there's some townhomes, there's some little apartments. You have a couple of projects that have come in, but you, you're still missing the full range of housing that you typically would find in a downtown.
And also, keep, keep in mind, keep in mind, too, that we may illustrate multifamily, but that could be condo ownership.
That, I was just about to ask. Where condominiums?
We have one.
You can have some frickin' awesome multi, uh, multi-use bottom-floor stuff and flats that are for sale.
Ronnie, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to talk to you about the language, and this is a public meeting.
Well, then you just walk ahead, but I don't have to listen. You know, there's other things in box, five, six, seven-story apartments, you know? You can actually take that and turn that same building around and sell them.
Can I add a comment here? One thing you might, I don't know if this is.
We can hear you.
Doesn't work? One thing you could do is Paris could do an alternative plan. He's absolutely correct. I mean, I've got clients that are building 20 to 25 to the acre townhomes, three-story townhomes. They can be done at that. But he's absolutely correct. You're talking about fewer overall units. But maybe that's okay for you as a strategy. It, it doesn't necessarily fly that you have to have density of everywhere to get a vibrant downtown. Maybe you want to take, have Paris look at an alternative strategy of saying, okay, what if we do close to 50%? Maybe it's 40% for sale, and we go up to 20 to 25 to the acre. How many units do we end up with versus the plan you see now? And then it gives you an alternative to look at.
I guess where I'm coming from is in the South, we only look at home ownership as at least a quarter acre with one building.
I do.
All these other places, for the majority, north of the Mason-Dixon line, they sell units in the building. I'm not saying not to have the density. I'm saying stop all the rental and sell some of those beautiful places.
No, that's, that's a really good point. I've worked in a lot of those places, too. What's, and I don't know why we have some of the cultural issues that we have in terms of.
Because we're used to it.
Well, maybe it could be. But what's interesting is, if you're up in Chicago, same buildings are for sale.
Exactly.
They're not for rent. When you come here, if I went into my lender today and I said, do I have a deal for you? I'm going to go forward, I'm going to have a 280-unit condo deal, and it's in this beautiful building with ups and downs. It's extremely difficult to get that done in this market. Doesn't mean that 10 years from now, it won't be. It's just having the understanding that you've got a good framework in place, and that you have good zoning, you ensure quality, and you have a, a location of mix. And then, when someone comes in and they say, I want to do a rental deal, then you have a conversation, because there's going to be approvals that says, how can we do it? Or at least at a minimum, how can it be done so it's easily convertible? Because that does happen. You know, I've worked on a deal in, in State Thomas area that's for sale now. And it was, it's a wonderful project. It was rental in the beginning, two-story units, 1250 average, and it's great now for sale. It took 20 years to get to the point where someone wanted to invest their, and their own money in something that they, that they would own. That's because now all the community-based infrastructure is in place, and people can see living there for the long haul. So it's just having that eye on the, the future. But again, for me, these are dangerous graphics, because it's illustrative. The reality is, what's the street framework? And what's your zoning that defines how you address the street? And then, case-by-case basis, you look at the land use.
But, but, yes, I understand what you're saying. So from a, from a, and just to clarify, Ronnie, so from a zoning standpoint, it doesn't really matter if it's condo or townhome, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's the same allowed use.
Right.
So, and I think it goes back to Paris's point, is who's going to underwrite it from a, from a banking standpoint?
Well, hopefully, a lot of those old bankers that bank that way are retired.
But, but to Councilwoman Green's, and I apologize, I called you Ronnie, I should have called you.
You called Ronnie as mine.
So Kristin? Councilwoman, Councilwoman Green, your, your comment, I, you know, I think that is, that, that's what we do in economic development. So we do bring builders, developers to the table. I would say over the last year, this has not been the focus. We've been, because, and this, this will go to our discussion yesterday about prioritization. So prioritizations, Mary Shell has been spending a lot of her effort on affordable housing, has been spending a lot of her time on, you know, the mall redevelopment and the Lake District. So that shows you where, like, how those priorities are super important to staff, because then if, I mean, literally, if you were like, we want townhome developers in Old Town, and that's a priority versus the mall, we will shift where we put our resources and time spent on that. So just, just want, we'll talk about that more tomorrow with prioritizations.
Yeah, I just want it all. I just want to make it easy for you. I want it all.
Yeah, and we do have a lot of tools in the toolbox to negotiate as, as, as developers, you know, come our way. And then, there's a lot of them coming our way. And I've gotten like two emails just this morning while we were sitting here about Old Town. So, you know, the good news is, you know, things are continuing to evolve and move forward. I think a good case in point is, you know, the Trinsic project. You know, for years, we were talking to multifamily developers, and they said, no, you can never do a rap, you just, it, it won't work in Old Town Louisville. We found a way to prove it. Once it was proven and built, they, they came in. And what that has done, that has really been kind of the first thing to really activate and really get things moving forward. So it's really been kind of a gift. Yes, it wasn't easy, it took several years. And I think these concepts will evolve. And I think if we do keep a focus on, on, you know, trying to get, increase the mix of, of owner, owner-occupied units in whatever format we can. It could be a multifamily format, it could be a townhome format, it could be single-family cottages. I think the key there is, we want variety and mix. But then we also have to kind of keep in mind, too, that we got to be thinking about, you know, what is kind of the ultimate density that we have to design the infrastructure? We don't want to assume lower density, put, and, and invest in that infrastructure, then all of a sudden, the market changes and demands higher densities, and then all of a sudden, we've got the same problem. And we don't want to have to do it twice. That, that's not very, won't be very good for our budgets. We want to do.
Well, I think I'm looking at the, sorry, I'm going to have detention afterwards, because I keep getting the evil eye. I'm looking at these areas like little villages. They have several different types of housing. And not just one type. And that's, that's how I'm seeing this. That's how I want to see it. That's how I want everyone to see it. TJ, you following?
I just went and got new glasses at the optometrist. I can't see at night, though.
Oh, darn. But, you know, it's not, it should never be an either-or.
Right. And you're going to probably see this change. I mean, think back to 2010, to the original TOD plan. This is quite a bit different.
Yeah.
Again, evolution. Things keep evolving. This will change. But again, this is a starting point to kind of base some very important decisions on for infrastructure to support whatever comes in the future. I think we all know that we want a cool character, we want streetscape, walkability, we want variety and mixture. And I think that's something that we all can agree upon. And this is just, you know, an illustration of how we could get there.
I don't think that what I'm talking about would change infrastructure. It changes whether there's a lease or title.
It has implications on density as well, depending on the for sale. But I will tell you, absolutely, the goal is to have a blend of all types, so it's a true village. You don't want to have a monoculture of any, of anything that typically doesn't work well in an urban environment. So the intention is to have a full blend. And, you know, to, to your point, and to Richard's point, you can have condos out here. People were saying, I remember, I mean, remember, were saying, no, a multifamily project won't work here. It's worked, it took some effort on y'all's part. It could be that you could, to, to your point. It's worked, it took some effort on y'all's part, it could be that you, to your point, it could be that you go out and say, we want to try and make a for-sale project beyond the townhomes, something that is a different model for this region work, and then find someone. The great thing about Dallas developers is, if they can get the money, they'll build it, right? So it's just a function of having a story and writing their perceived risk down to a point where they feel like they can get the money and the lender feels comfortable to, and then, once there's a comp, then there's a comp. It's exactly what's happening now on the rental side. So that may be a focus of your economic development efforts, but it's no different than the mall. You're not the master developer, but there's no other entity that is over this whole zone except y'all, so if you want to see some targeted projects, you know, that are a different kind of use, there's no one else that's going to figure that out realistically, and then you can go get the developers and make it happen.
So I think my final question is, you know, are y'all comfortable moving forward with this illustration as part of the rest of the process to finish out the plan? Okay, I think we're all glad to show you a little bit more information on the next slide. So as far as the master plan, next step is really stakeholder engagement, so we will need to engage property owners, tenants, business owners, but we'll also have to have kind of targeted engagement with some special stakeholders, like some key property owners that possibly need relocation, you know, we've got a concrete plant that will, you know, this is in a very prime location on Main Street. We also have some key mixed-use developers that are interested, and we need to, you know, bring them to the table, get their ideas, and get them plugged in, as Councilman, Councilwoman Green kind of mentioned, so, you know, like I said, you're reading my mind. So at that point, once we get that input from the stakeholders, we will make further modifications based on that engagement. Then, I think the most important thing, then, is to kind of come up with the roadmap and come up with action steps for implementation of the plan, because of course, we're not going to do this all at once, it's going to take time, we're going to have to focus on different areas, particularly with the infrastructure. Once we have those action steps, we'll probably come back to you with a work session, kind of walk you through everything before we have our formal public hearings before Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. As far as the infrastructure piece, it'll be kind of going concurrently, they'll complete the analysis and enter those costs into the plan programming and get that all completed. Also, at the same time, as Keith mentioned, we will be firming up a lot of the information from an infrastructure analysis, more on a citywide modeling, just to make sure everything is consistent and that we know we're moving in the right direction, and that'll include an update to our land use assumptions and our associated impact fees, and really looking, you know, under a microscope at that expected growth in Old Town and plugging that into the impact fee process. Our staff, you know, staff will also coordinate with the consultants that do the modeling to further delineate those deficiencies and improvements that we need, and then that will ultimately kind of lead back into almost the same action steps that we're going to need to identify the priorities, the phasing, and the funding for that infrastructure that's going to support the ultimate vision. All at the same time, you know, like I said, working with the landowners and the developers, so a lot of moving parts, but I think we all have kind of a unified goal. So any questions or comments on our next steps? I see a thumbs up.
All right.
I think it's a compelling vision to go to market with, so.
Okay.
All right. If there's not any other questions, thank you very much.
All right, we, yeah, we've bought back some time, but because of legal reasons, I'm going to have to, we can't like move everything up.
Okay, that's great. Can we take another 15 minutes?
We've got more than 15 minutes now, we got, next event starts at-
1:30.
1:30, so yeah, we can take 10 minutes here.